Good morning. It's nine o'clock. February ninth, we will begin today's county board meeting. For the record, there is a copy of the Open Meetings Act here on the north wall of the legislature and an automatic defibrillator in the back. With that, I'll ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, if there's anybody in the chamber that may have electronic device, we'll ask you to mute it or turn it off at this time. With that, Mr. Clerk, we will call the role for the Board of Equalization.
Commissioner Marine Boyle, Commissioner Mike Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh appears as absent at the moment. Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Borgeson is also, looks like she might be absent as well. Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
And Mr. Chair.
Here. For the record, before we get into the, we want to send well wishes to Commissioner Borgeson. She had an unfortunate accident. She's getting a CAT scan right now, so hopefully everything happens well. Huh? Yes. Yes. With that, we'll go to item A. Approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, February 2nd. And item B, call for a meeting set Tuesday, February 23rd, 2021 is the date for hearing on certified assessments and corrections. What's the will of the Board? There's a motion by Commissioner Boyle, that's second. Second by Commissioner Friend. Please vote.
Motion passes five to zero.
We'll go to item C, citizens' comments under the Board of Equalization. This is an opportunity for people to make comment on items not officially listed on the Board of Equalization's agenda. Are there any citizens' comments at this time? Seeing none, we'll go to resolutions. D, E, and F is their motion to approve D, E, and F, and adjourn. Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes five to zero.
We will now call to order the Douglas County Board of Corrections meeting. Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Commissioner Marine Boyle, Commissioner Mike Boyle. Commissioner Borgeson is absent. Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent. Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan. Mr. Chair.
Here. Item one is approval of the minutes of the Board of Corrections meeting held Tuesday, January 12th, 2021. Is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes five to zero.
Item three is report from the directions, the Corrections Director, Mr. Myers. Sorry. Yes, citizens' comments. Are there any citizens' comments in regards to the Board of Corrections that, for items that are not listed on the Board of Corrections agenda? Seeing none. Thank you. Mr. Myers.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mike Myers, Director of Corrections for Douglas County. You have the board report for January before you. Turning your attention to enclosure number one of Administrative Services. Following the seventh month of our fiscal year, our projection is $601,785 under budget. We spent $357,387 on overtime costs during January. That's a decrease of about $35,000 from the previous month. We, we hope to obtain further reductions as CARES Act renovations projects wrapped up for the, by and large, during, over the course of January. And our staffing levels generally continue to increase. Enclosure number two, community corrections and in-house programs. Due to the drastic impact of the COVID-19 pandemic on community corrections activities, our data is significantly different than the norm. Several staff have been repurposed to allow essential work, essential functions to continue. Work release, the Reentry Assistance Program, therapeutic communities, GED, and the Law Library were all suspended for the duration of the month. However, individuals' requests for the Law Library are still being addressed. Our reentry services staff have had significant portions of their workday converted to facilitating online court hearings and other legal functions. They facilitated 518 court hearings and 38 hours of review of discovery material. I am, however, happy to report that as of yesterday, on February 8th, the transition of responsibility for virtual court hearings is complete. We now have three positions called virtual court facilitators. They are under the Records Division chain of command, and they will be handling all of the virtual court duties going forward. This will allow our reentry specialists to return full-time to delivering and coordinating services for our incarcerated population. Our 24/7 sobriety programs have drastically changed during the pandemic to become a largely remote-based program to minimize face-to-face interactions. We have seen an increase in drug testing violations as a result of these changes associated with less frequent contact with these individuals. There were 76 individuals placed on the program. There were 2,941 breath tests that were administered using remote breath technology, 13 of which were positive for alcohol use, and there was one no-show for alcohol breath testing. The overall compliance rate for alcohol breath testing was 99.9%. Forty-five individuals were monitored for a total of 1,355 days of SCRAM monitoring. There were zero no-shows, there were seven tampering violations, and there were five alcohol violations. The overall SCRAM compliance was 98.8%. There were 53 saliva drug tests administered with three violations, and there were 161 drug testing patches submitted for testing with 53 violations. Work release was closed for the month. House arrest admitted 31 individuals. The reentry assistance program was closed. In our therapeutic communities, reentry services has been able to resume a limited amount of programming and reentry planning. Pretrial services are, they, our pretrial services staff continue to provide daily information to the courts regarding candidates for bond reduction and early pleas in response to the pandemic. Thirty-five individuals were referred for priority prosecution, and 1,100 bed days were saved. Three hundred and forty-one individuals were placed on pretrial release. 1,542 individuals were managed on pretrial release with a 90% compliance rate. As I mentioned earlier, the Law Library was closed throughout the month, but we continue to address individual requests. We continue to participate in a year-long pilot project to implement the Public Safety Assessment as a part of our strategy to enhance pretrial release supervision and supportive services. Enclosure number three, compliance. We will participate in a virtual American Correctional Association accreditation hearing as the formal follow-up to our recently completed audit. That virtual hearing will be held on March 16th. We are also providing follow-up documentation from our recent ICE audit as well. Enclosure number four, personnel. One sergeant and seven officers below the rank of sergeant left employment in January. A class of 18 new officers began their training academy on January 19th. Very briefly, we obtained 100% staffing for the first time in several years. We will continue to build upon our staff retention and hiring efforts to maintain an average of our authorized strength moving forward. And congratulations to Sergeant Paul Schmitz, who had his 30th anniversary of employment with Douglas County Department of Corrections. Enclosure number five, population. There were 1,174 admissions. There were 1,157 releases. Our high count was 1,307. Our low count was 1,233. The average daily population was 1,268. A pretty significant increase over the previous month, as that rose by 50 inmates per day. There were 93 custodial bed sanctioned day, or, excuse me, custodial sanctioned bed days. That is a decrease. The US Marshal population and the ICE population both decreased at my request. Due to the rising numbers of local offenders, we were forced to ask our federal partners to house their population elsewhere and reduce the number that they were holding with us. The felony pretrial population increased. The misdemeanor pretrial population decreased. Probation violations increased slightly. The female population increased, and the fourth female housing unit remained open. Enclosure number six, medical. There were 1,130 intake screenings. There were 343 health and physical assessments. Inmates were sent out 13 times for emergent medical care. Seven of those were by 911. There were five hospital admissions, which resulted in a combined 33 days of hospitalization. Enclosure number seven, mental health. There are 103 initial psychiatric assessments completed, 95 initial mental health assessments. There were 81 mental health infirm replacements, which is a very high number. Typically, that number runs in the 40s to 50s. And it does seem to be reflective of an increase in the, in the level of acuity of our population. There was one board of mental health referral and three individuals who were sent to long-term psychiatric facilities. Other noteworthy items. We continue to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. We are fortunate today to report a decrease in the number of positive COVID-19 cases in January among both staff and the incarcerated population. We continue to follow CDC and Douglas County Health Department guidance and advice during this pandemic regarding quarantine, testing, PPE use, and sanitation. By and large, our CARES Act-funded renovations were completed over the course of January. There are some minor details that remain outstanding and will be completed as soon as possible. We are grateful to the Douglas County Health Department for their assistance with vaccination planning. In late January, we were able to get some staff vaccinated, though the vast majority are still waiting. We are in daily communication with the Health Department to utilize leftover doses at the conclusion of vaccination clinics. Those doses are being distributed among first responders and what have otherwise gone to waste. We continue to monitor our population very closely on a daily basis. Recently, we have been able to use our gymnasiums as gymnasiums instead of using them as housing units. This is in part due to the completion of the renovations of the final housing unit covered by the Public Safety Bond project. For the first time in a few years, all 29 housing units in the jail are able to be utilized simultaneously. All future renovation and repair projects, which would, which would take housing units offline, have been suspended indefinitely. We continue to be concerned by the number of individuals being held on pretrial felony charges. These numbers have increased steadily throughout the pandemic as a result of very few in-person court hearings taking place. The collaboration between DCDC and the courts to implement virtual court hearings has been very effective in handling lower-level cases, but those charged with more serious and violent offenses are often awaiting hearings which must be held in person. There are a finite number of beds which can be used to house maximum-security inmates, and as those cases continue to stack up, we will be faced with difficult choices in order to maintain the highest level of safety and security possible under the circumstances. As the courts have identified widespread use of the vaccine within the justice system as a linchpin for restoring their functions, we continue to advocate for the justice system to receive vaccinations as soon as possible. And I want to go off-script here for a second and acknowledge one of my former bosses, the former Deputy Director of the Department of Corrections, John Hubbard, who was the Director of Corrections for Sarpy County upon his retirement from Douglas County. John passed away suddenly and unexpectedly over the weekend. A very shocking and stunning development. John taught me an awful lot about the operations of corrections, and I'll always be indebted to him for that. Our thoughts and prayers go out to his family as they navigate this difficult time. And we will be participating in the services with our honor guard and in whatever way we can help support John's family. We are, I'll be in contact with the family when we have a little more time to plan and to see if they have an interest in coming before the Board and recognizing John's service to Douglas County in a, in a more formal manner than I'm doing at the moment. But I just wanted to say thanks to John one more time for all of his help and our condolences to his family.
Yep. Thank you, Mike, and Snow, in our respect, so we can prepare a resolution. And I see Commissioner Mike Boyle's hand up.
Mr. Chair, I just want to add my condolences as well. I worked with John for many years over Corrections, and he was always a cooperative guy and had a ready smile and very professional. So I am also very shocked and saddened, so I just wanted to add my, my thoughts as well. Thanks, Mike.
I see Commissioner Friend.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. Mike, thanks for the report, and I was sorry to hear about John as well. That was shocking, and our prayers are with, are with his family. Mike, I was, I was going to ask you a quick question about enclosure four and the personnel items. One of them is kind of a practical question, the other one is more of a, to ask you to opine maybe philosophically about it. One, we lost in, in January, first of all, the 100% staffing is, is great. When officers, when officers leave, what's your experience? Are they, are they moving into different corrections opportunities? Are they moving into law enforcement? What's the, what's the norm, if you will? I mean, what have you found?
Sure. There, there's a few, there are a few that, that move on to other law enforcement-related professions. There are times where it's our decision. There may be a couple of these included in this list that were our decision. And then there are, there are others, this, you know, corrections is a very, it's a very tough environment to work in, and the longevity of people's careers sometimes isn't as, as long as we would like. And that's one of the things that really is one of my primary goals throughout my tenure as Director is to counteract some of those negative impacts on people's mental health and physical health that this profession tends to have, to improve their longevity in this profession, to improve their effectiveness in this profession. But it's, it's, to be honest, Commissioner, it's kind of a mixed bag. You know, some people, they, they just realize this just isn't for them any, any longer. Sometimes around this time of year, too, we have shift bidding twice a year. And the new shift bid starts in January and July. And so they, there are some times, we lose a handful of people every six months because they were moved because of the, the union rules on the shift bidding. They end up on a shift that just simply doesn't work for their home life, childcare, et cetera, or if they're going to school. We try to do our best to work those things out and see if there's any possible solution on a case-by-case basis, but we do lose a handful of people over the course of the year, and that may have contributed a little bit to these numbers in January as well.
That's good information. Thanks, Mike. Is there, one of the things, and this was more the philosophical thing, is there a, it's a class of 18 new officers going into training on, or that went into the Training Academy on January 19th. Can you talk briefly about what that, the timeframe of that training? How, how long that takes, what it entails? I'm very familiar with law enforcement training. What I'm trying to do is get a feel for, and I've never reached into it, what, what that looks like, especially with COVID right now.
Absolutely. So our, our Training Academy is currently five weeks in length. And then there's two weeks of field training after that. So it's, it's seven weeks of training total before officers are working on their own. We have made some adaptations with COVID. We have, we have moved their con, physical contract training, their self-defense training and so forth. That, that has gotten moved up sooner. And we don't bring the new hires out into the secure side of the facility for the first two weeks after they begin their classroom training. And we do have, we have been using testing as well to assure that they're safe to go over and when they, when they start. By and large, that, that has been a fairly successful strategy to, you know, to, to kind of keep them as their own isolated group for the first couple of weeks and not bring them over for tours and integrate them into the rest of the facility until later on in their training. That combined with adding testing to the beginning of their employment has helped as well.
Got a little under a minute, Commissioner Friend.
Is there, is, you're usually having a couple of classes a year, if you're, if you're lucky?
We've had several classes a year recently because we were way down in staffing. It's my goal to settle in on four classes per year, have them quarterly, and then go back to training our existing staff with advanced skills in between those academies. We may have five classes this year because I would like to get to the point where we're averaging our authorized strength rather than just attaining it for a day and then, and then being below.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Thanks for this report. I don't have the hard copy right in front of me, so I was wondering if you could give us the ethnic demographic breakdown of the jail population?
I can, Commissioner. One moment. In January, 43.8% of the population were African-American. Thirty-six, I apologize, this is printed very dark on dark background. So at least 36.8% were, are, were white, and 13.3% were Hispanic. And much smaller, I think 3% were Native American, and just under 2% were Asian.
Thank you. So we consistently maintain a majority-minority population. This has not changed. I wanted to congratulate you on completing the Public Safety Bond build-out on time and on budget. That's a great accomplishment for Douglas County, and we're very proud of the fact that we're able to bring that in with no property tax increase. And kudos to you and your staff for working around that. I believe you said you are now, for the first time in a year, able to utilize all of your housing units. Is that correct?
In several years, actually.
That's, that's really super. So thank you. And it makes a huge difference. I've been down there and looked at them, and it's, it's night and day over what it was before. So kudos to you and the folks who worked on that. Regarding the vaccinations of your staff and population, I think you indicated that it's been difficult to get vaccines for the staff. Do you have a, kind of a, an idea of what percentage of the staff have actually received vaccines?
Yes, and I'll give you, so, and there's some more recent developments since I typed this report, which have worked in our favor. We were able to get quite a few staff vaccinated yesterday on a one-time opportunity that was available to us and other first responding agencies. I don't have those exact numbers yet, but if, if everybody who was signed up for the vaccination made it and got vaccinated yesterday, we should have, between, well, let me give you the back, the context. Between our staff and our medical contractors and other contractors that work there full-time, we, there's about 500 people that work at the Department of Corrections. We may have close to, best-case scenario, 175 to 180 people vaccinated now after the clinic yesterday. Now, that's just their first dose. They still, everybody still is awaiting a second dose.
That's great. And as far as the population goes, is there discussion ongoing relative to when the population would receive vaccinations?
Yeah, I, I don't anticipate that to happen soon. You know, I, I think the, the, right now, the, the priority are those, you know, 65 and up. And I have not received any specific plans
You got one minute, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
regarding, regarding vaccination of our incarcerated population.
Okay. In order to alleviate the backlog of cases that you indicated was occurring because the courts are unable to process and hold trials, are there discussions ongoing with the other partners that you have in the criminal justice system to make sure that we can get those up and going through vaccinating the key players in that?
Yes, we've been a strong advocate for the courts getting vaccinated. To, to be honest, that's almost as important as, as vaccinating our staff in terms of getting some of those cases moving. The courts have scheduled a great number of trials to begin in March irrespective of the vaccinations, and this is a little bit, like I said, knowledge that came to our awareness just recently. So they are going to be attempting to move some things forward, so hopefully that will be met with some success.
That's time.
Right. We've received notice that they're canceling all civil trials and probably to concentrate on the criminal trial backlog that you indicated is causing us problems with our population increase.
Thank you, Commissioner Kavanaugh. That's time. Seeing none, oh, Commissioner Boyle, Marine Boyle.
I have several kind of unrelated, maybe random questions, but one is, can you explain the number, the increase in inmates over the past month or so?
You know, typically, our population is at its lowest in a year, during the calendar year, around this time of year. So this is, this is, I think, a result of a couple of things. One is the stacking up of the more difficult cases that just can, kind of continues to be a steady buildup. And I also think, we did make some headway in the last portion of January on our population. It's not as bad today as it was three weeks ago. I think there's, during, during the, the last half of December into the first week of January, we, the courts' activities tends to slow down anyway because of people taking vacations and so forth, and not as many cases are being heard. So we did have, and there was a significant number of, you know, or maybe a higher number than expected number of arrests that continued to come in during, you know, the, the holiday season. And there, and there wasn't as much court activity to process those cases. So I think, you know, the, the, the combination of the slow and steady increase of our felony population combined with just the typical holiday slowdown of the courts. combined with just the typical holiday slowdown of the courts, caused a spike for about a month there.
I see. And then also, do you find that there is an increase in violations, say, for the drug and alcohol monitoring because there's, there's more remote use?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there a way to ensure there's no tampering of those results?
So the, the tampering violations that I referenced, there, there are basically two, two ways that we test people that you can either fail that test by tampering with it or you can fail the test by using a substance that you're prohibited from using. One of them are the SCRAM bracelets that you wear on your ankle that detect alcohol use through your skin. There are times where people will attempt to put a piece of, you know, something in between their, their skin and the bracelet to try to preclude the, the test from, but there are sensors built in to detect that. So we treat that as if you, you know, a tampering violation is the same sanction as an actual drinking event. We use drug testing patches, and that's really, we, we use, the, those numbers have completely flip-flopped. We would do in-person drug testing ninety percent of the time. And when people seem to be stabilized, we'd put them on the patches where they didn't have to come back very often. Now we're using way more drug testing patches, probably fifteen times more drug testing patches. We used to do like ten to fifteen per month, and now we're doing, you know, I think this month was over 160. People wear those patches for, you know, kind of on, we put them on, place them on the back of their shoulder. They wear those for up, up to two weeks, and then we send that in for analysis, and it, and it detects drugs through secretions in the skin. Those, you know, we do have more positive drug tests that happen with those because we're using them earlier in the process in an attempt to minimize the exposure of our staff to hundreds of people every day of the week for the drug testing. So it's an unfortunate compromise that we've had to make in order to safeguard both the participants in the program and our staff.
That makes sense. And then you mentioned that there were nine-one-one calls for inmates. Typically, what are, what do those entail?
Those could be anything from, you know, if somebody
One minute.
Needed stitches after hours and we didn't have a provider there, or it could be, you know, for a medical emergency. We have a lot of people who come to jail that haven't had the best healthcare history. And we have folks who, you know, diet, it could be a diabetic reaction, a stroke, high blood pressure event, where we think that their immediate needs exceed the level of care we can provide in-house.
So those are nine-one-ones? That makes sense. Okay. And then the last thing was, you mentioned about how some of the inmates were able to, were transferred, the ICE folks in particular, to the federal. Is that something that can be utilized to create more space in our, our facility?
Yeah, well, and that's what I did. I mean, I, I told the Marshal Service and, and ICE that they needed to reduce their numbers somewhat. During the, over the course of the pandemic, they've had to reduce their numbers significantly. I asked them again to reduce their numbers and use other facilities around the Midwest because we simply didn't have space.
Thanks a lot.
Commissioner Mike Boyle for a second time.
Mike, I want to take a moment to thank you for the excellent work you've done. I've been the commissioner that's been responsible for dealing with corrections primarily as the commissioner that was appointed. And I enjoyed very much, I've been around since Mark Foxall, and, and you were there then, and you're there now. You're, you've taken over and done a terrific job. Your attitude, which was very much like Mr. Foxall's, is that it's one of respect for the people who are there. You treat everybody with dignity, and it makes a big difference in the, inside the place. So I just want to tell you a, a big thank you for the fine job you've done, and I was, saw it firsthand all the time. And so I've, now, Mike, a friend is going to be getting those three AM phone calls from you, so. But thanks a lot. You're doing a great job.
Thank you.
And Amber is a wonderful component of yours as well. Is she here this morning?
She is not here this morning, but she's here on Zoom. I see her.
Oh, good. All right. That's great. Well, she does a great job. You're a great team, and I really appreciate the quality of the care you're giving and leadership over there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kavanaugh, is that a new hand or old hand?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Good. So, okay, so, Mike, I got one question for you.
Sure.
Let's go back to, I'm just curious, have we evaluated the, it's a question when I, under item, the community corrections program, the SCRAM program?
Mm-hmm.
I always wonder when I see ninety-eight point, pretty much ninety-nine
Right.
Point compliance rates. I mean, particularly with the population now. Is there, is there some conversation to be had with the judges about taking some more risk? Because with a ninety-nine percent rate, it, it seems like we plan it safe, or too safe.
Sure. So I, I think that that's an, you know, most of the people who are placed on the 24/7 program are be, as a result of DUIs or crimes that involve alcohol or drug use, one way or another. Individuals who have committed violent offenses or, or that don't have this component, don't have a drug or alcohol component are probably not on the judge's radar for this.
So that's the, the dominant piece, the, you can have, but the drug and alcohol piece has to be the foundation?
Yeah. Now, what, what we're hoping to do with our pre-trial enhancements that we're working on is to really give this the, a more global or kind of comprehensive impact by having 24/7 be used with GPS monitoring and programming and other things. So that, that way you can, on a person-by-person basis, put in supervision and support services which are designed to mitigate the risks that these defendants have present with when you assess them. So that, and over the course of 2021, we hope to have that broader menu of services developed and, and deployed in hopes that some of those, you know, some of those individuals who might not be considered by the judges for lower bonds are being put on supervision instead of money bonds. Those, those, some things might happen a little more often.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Seeing nothing else. Thanks, Mike. Appreciate it. Is there a motion to adjourn the board corrections meeting? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
I vote yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Kavanaugh voting virtually all their commissioners in person.
We'll now call to order the Board of Commissioners' meeting. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Maureen Boyle, Commissioner Mike Boyle, Commissioner Borgeson is absent, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Here.
Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Mr. Chair.
Here. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners' meeting held Tuesday, February 2nd, 2021. Item B is approval of claims submitted for payment and process through Tuesday, February 16th, 2021. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
I vote yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Kavanaugh voting virtually all their commissioners in person.
Let me know for the record, just so everybody knows, under presentations, item A will be postponed till our next meeting on the 23rd, till Commissioner Boylson can be here. So if anybody has any curiosity in that, that's going to be postponed. We got nine items on the consent agenda. I'll ask for a motion to approve, and we do have people here to answer the questions presented yesterday on the pre-board meeting call. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Commissioner Boyle is there, second. Seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Shaquille, you want to come up real quick? Commissioner Maureen Boyle just had a FYI information question, since she saw that she wanted to answer.
Good morning, Commissioner. Shaquille Malik, Douglas County Attorney's Office.
This is on item H.
Yeah, so just to give you a quick background on this. My office, the county attorney's office, the county clerk's office, Mr. Ash's office, and the health department all have contracts with DHHS. What this is, is this is a system that the state uses to maintain vital records in the state. So with my office, we use it to issue deaths, complete and issue death certificates in our role as the county coroner. Mr. Friend's office uses it for marriage licenses. Every five years, we do this update to our, essentially our user agreement for the system. Mr. Ash's office went through on January 12th. We're taking ours through now. I'm not entirely sure of the timetable on when the health department's renewal will be coming through. Essentially, by state statute, we all have our statutory responsibilities, be it death certificates, marriage licenses for a health department. It can be birth and death certificates. That's how you can get your birth certificates, going through the health department. But state statute also says that DHHS gets to call the shots like they do for many other things. So essentially, that's, we have to do this agreement to user system.
Yeah, that I don't, I can't, I don't know if I can turn you on. Yep, I can. I got it.
All right. So my, my question initially was just to understand the, the relationship and the purpose of, of DHHS having an involvement in that. And so you've answered that. It sounds like it's a mandate. The second question I have is just making sure that I was, as I was reading the agreement, just to make sure that information that the users here in our county are, are clear this is HIPAA information and that they're trained that this is, this is protected by, by law, that, that should not be disclosed.
So what originally happened when we first did these agreements five years ago is they did have HIPAA language under them, but that was what we deemed not appropriate for any of the departments since all the activities came under HIPAA exemptions, be it either public health activities or governmental functions. There's a few different exemptions. However, regardless of HIPAA, under state law, most of this information is controlled either by state statute or by regulation, state statute, as far as controlling who can get the information, when and how. For example, you can't just go in and get somebody's death certificate. You can't just go and get someone's birth certificate without having proper approvals. And there's a whole bunch of DHS regulations concerning that. I know there's regulations on marriage licenses too. So with that, we did get the specific HIPAA language and business associate agreement out there. And the reason for that is because we cited all the statutory provisions where it's well covered under Nebraska state law and DHS regulations, which have the effect of law on what you can and cannot do with this information.
Okay, those are my questions. Thanks.
You're good.
Yep.
Okay. You're good, Shaquille. Thanks. Item F, Dr. Poor, I see you there. There were questions, particularly to items three and four on item F from Commissioner Kavanaugh and Commissioner Morgan. Dr. Poor, if you want to answer those?
Yes. I was just looking for some background explanation on what we are being asked to pay for and who we're actually paying. I don't know if Dr. Poor is here. I believe that's under the
She's on. She's on. She's, she can, I see you, Dr. Poor, if you want to unmute and answer it. There she is.
Sure, Commissioners. I'm glad to answer. I report that this county health department. So when we talked to the health system and asked them to help us in this endeavor to vaccinate, each of them actually said, you know, there is going to be some cost involved. And we asked them to put the costs together. So some of it is primary cost to get their facility in, you know, appliance disabled and so on, ADA appliance. And what you see in both of the proposals from CHI and UNMC is there is some upfront cost, but then it is the support for their workforce that is going to work, going to be working at these sites. Nebraska Medicine has the site on 144th and Millard Avenue. And that site is really going by itself. The health department is going to always have a nurse there who looks at the vaccination and so on. But other than that, all the staff provided at that site is provided by Nebraska Medicine. The same with the Emmanuel site. At that site, CHI is going to put their staff on there. And, and all, every effort around it is staffed by CHI and Nebraska Medicine. The same is going to happen potentially at the Creighton side, Rasmussen side, because it, this is, it takes a lot of staff time from their standpoint to do that. So we realized together with the governor pretty quickly that you cannot expect volunteers from the health system to do this. This is going to be a long haul, potentially many, many months. And so all of us with the local health department across Nebraska agreed that we were going to have to reimburse for these type of services. And that's what you see on today's agenda, the first two contracts.
Thank you, doctor. And will this speed up the delivery of vaccines in our community?
You know, I don't know how much quicker we can do it. We do it as quick as possible. What we get in on Monday, we get in arms every single dose by Sunday. So, but what this does, it provides us more opportunities. And we have used a model where we feel it's better to have smaller clinics in different parts of the county than just a mass vaccination clinic like Lincoln is doing. And so this allows us that component.
There are other people doing vaccinations in the community, I think, like One World and other outlets, Kohl's and things. Are they being reimbursed for their personnel costs, personnel costs?
So the FQHCs, what they are doing is they don't do, they are not doing a community clinic, but they are vaccinating mostly their patients. So when the patients come in and they see that they fit into sixty-five and above for the federal qualified health center, then they provide them a vaccine. So that's a little bit different. Pharmacies are again different because pharmacies are going to charge their cost to insurance companies. If the individual has insurance companies, then the pharmacies are allowed for an administrative fee. And so they are, we, they are getting reimbursed that way. So you see different models.
Got one minute.
These funds, and doctor, if you don't know, I think Joe's here, are general funds or they cares reimbursed funds? Does?
So these are the funds, remember, Commissioner, when I came, I think it may have been September when I made the proposal to the county board, and we had a vaccination component in there. Well, December came, and we didn't use the vaccination components. And we had, I think, close to between five, probably five million dollars left in that proposal. That proposal, and those funds then carried over into January. And that, those are the funds that we are paying these expenses from.
So originally cares funds going back?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay. I got Commissioner Morgan and Boyle, but I'm gonna ask if it's vaccine questions, can we wait? If it's money questions to the item, you go ahead. Commissioner Morgan, I was first. Commissioner Boyle, Mike Boyle.
On the money situation, are we getting a breakdown as far as these costs? Three-quarters of a million dollars from the different entities that are doing this? Dr. Poor?
Commissioner, yes, we are. We are getting breakdowns for, you know, what their total infrastructure cost is. And then they actually have itemized everything down to the cost per nurse, per hours, and so on. So pretty much similar to what Nebraska Medicine did for us when they did the testing site down in South Omaha.
Okay, that's very good. I also have heard from some former employees in the health area that they are volunteering their services to give the actual shots. And I've seen that in other states also. I'm sure you've heard the same thing, that they're not paying those people that are giving shots in other states. And I didn't know if that's true. I heard it's true here too. So there are some volunteers working.
Correctly. You are correct, Commissioner. We have a, a whole team who is just handling volunteers. But you know what, what is happening with the volunteers? They come today, and then tomorrow they don't feel like. And so it is a whole management of the volunteer force. But, and we have, most of our volunteers are really volunteers who are shepherding the individuals around when they are at the site, especially now when we are dealing with seniors. So they do the, you know, bringing the golf cart So they do the, you know, bringing the golf cart to pick them up at the car, drive them to the side and things like that. So we are very, very thankful. We have a huge volunteer group.
Thank you very much, Dr. Poor.
Commissioner Mike Boyle.
Concerns vaccine.
Okay, thank you. With that, there is a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Are there any items, any questions on the consent agenda? You got an item, you got a question on the consent agenda?
On that last side.
Come on.
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. And I want to compliment Adipoor. I had occasion to take an older neighbor down to Creighton University the other day. Things were very well run. And I did notice an awful lot of volunteers. But it was absolutely no problem that I could see. But I do wonder, of all that money that's being spent, how much of it goes to administrative people and not to supplies and things for the volunteers? So, you know, a little more transparency. I think on a nationwide basis, a lot of taxpayer money is going unfortunately to the wrong people for the wrong reasons. I'm not saying that's the case here, but I don't know how you prevent fraud, but obviously there has been some discussions of that. Thank you. But very well done job at Creighton University.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions. Clerk's ready?
Yes.
Please vote.
Yes.
And Mr. Chair, wait on your vote.
It's, yeah, I hear it. It's, yes. It's a-
All right. So you are voting yes, though?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Kavanaugh voting virtually all their commissioners in person.
Item five is citizens' comments. Are there any citizens who wish to comment on an item not listed on the official Board of Commissioners' agenda?
Item four?
Please. No. Yeah, item four, citizens' comments. You commenting on an item on the agenda?
No.
Okay, go ahead.
Louis C. Mannus, 3306 Burt Street. Good morning, Commissioners. I want to thank the board for adopting Robert's Rules of Order. It was a lively discussion a couple of weeks ago, I think it was. And I, I think that brings you guys up a level. I mean, for me, anyway. There was something I said out of order during that meeting, and I said that there wasn't anything, parliamentary law, that that wasn't something. I said something like that. What I was saying, well, what I wanted to say was that in countries that have parliaments, there's parliamentary law. Here in the United States, we have parliamentary procedure. And I have the 11th edition of Robert's Rules of Order. I have to upgrade. And I will read now what they, what they say about parliamentary law. Parliamentary law originally was the name given to the rules and customs for carrying on business in the English Parliament that were developed through a continuing process of decisions and precedents, somewhat like the growth of the common law. These rules and customs, as brought to America with the settling of the New World, became the basic substance from which the practice of legislative bodies in the United States evolved. Out of early American legislative procedure and paralleling it in further development has come the general parliamentary law or common parliamentary law of today, which is adapted to the needs of organizations and assemblies of widely differing purposes and conditions. In legislative bodies, there is often recourse to the general parliamentary law in situations not covered by the rules or precedents of the particular body, although some of the necessary procedure in such a case must be proper to that type of assembly alone. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. We are not a parliament here. And our national government is not a parliament. We broke away from parliament. So let's go back to the rules of order. Robert's Rules of Order is most commonly recognized outside of governmental bodies because parliamentary law and procedures allows you to do things that the normal citizens aren't allowed to be involved in. And that gets back to the roots of power and abuse of power. We have going on in our nation right now an abuse of power by a House of Representatives, branch of government, usurping the powers of other branches. This impeachment thing today is a ruse. And it needs to be recognized as such. In fact, they shouldn't even accept the House prosecutors in the Senate chambers. I don't think the Constitution says a thing about the House prosecuting in the Senate. But we don't have people in the national government that'll stand up for that. Not one. They could simply say, we're not accepting you into the door. We didn't accept the article. And by the way, the article is an infringement of Article I. We have infringements of Article I here in this body and in the other body. Which, by the way, if you look at Omaha, we have a mayor, city council, and a board of commissioners. That's sort of like parliament in a way. It's not really three branches separate because they, oh, well, I'm sorry, I guess they do co-mingle in the federal government too. But language and words do have matter. And thank you, Louis. Let's talk about rule breaking. Back to what I started off with. Last week, according to the rules, as I understand citizens' comments, rules, there is to be absolutely no discussions or debate. In fact, Mr. Rogers, after I was done last week, more or less, speaking of language and meaning of words, more or less insinuated, I'm uninformed and a liar. That's the way it came off. I want to correct that in that he's the one that's uninformed because the people that had Black Lives Matters today have admitted that they were Marxist-trained. That's not a lieser. But in terms of breaking the rules, he was out of order, not me, because these citizen comment rules says there will be no debate, which means because I turn away from the microphone and I sit down, that he has the right in this body to address me without a due discussion. He shouldn't say a thing either. I, as a citizen, have a right to petition my government. I stood up to do that. And then I stood up to reply to a rule that was broken, called out of order, and of course, well, I guess I walked out on my own, didn't I? I don't pay taxes to have a deputy called upon to ask me out of a citizens' open meeting where I'm addressing my government, petitioning my government. But those in power seem to think they can do that. They're trying to do that in DC starting today. Mike, one time you told me this, we're not in a revolution. Well, I think if you fast forward from that day, it looks more like we are in a revolution.
One minute.
So, one minute, thank you. But I'd like Mr. Rogers to understand and everybody else to understand, I'm not a racist, but I am against the Black Lives Matters leaders currently being quiet, pitting us one against the other. That's not the way we work things in this country. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Just point of fact, Larry, I responded to you on presentations, not citizens' comments. With that, we'll go to item five, which is presentations. As I mentioned before, item A is postponed till the 23rd. Item B is the weekly COVID vaccine update. Dr. Poor?
Good morning again, Commissioner. And as you remember, last week was the first week that we opened our vaccination for seniors. And we started with those ADA years and above and realized probably by Thursday that we still had approximately 500 appointments open at Creighton Clinic for Saturday. So that's when we decided to open it up for those 75 years and above to really fill those slots, and they filled very quickly. So last week, potentially, we had 9,000 doses because from the pharmacies, we received more than 2,500 doses that they did not use and they provided to us. And remember, that was the federal pharmacy program where they vaccinated those individuals in long-term care facilities. That went all good, and I have shared with you last time. So in total, as of this morning, I just looked, we have administered 57,659 doses, 42,284 are first doses, and 15,375 are second doses. And potentially, we have 3.6% of our population vaccinated. And then I need to make a comment there. We have already 2,800 documents that we have not put into NASTA systems yet. So that is lagging behind a little bit. We are asking for 10 more staff to actually do data entry on them. So the number is potentially higher. But what you are seeing on our website now too, we have a special tab. You can go on vaccine on douglascountyhealth.com and you go on our dashboard and then click vaccine. It also gives you the breakdown by race and ethnicity. And really, that's and by age, and that's important to follow as we move forward. We have now received finally the data from the state so that we are able to do that. And what you are seeing is the first doses, 77% of those doses have been administered to whites and 6.5% to African-Americans, 5.1% to Hispanic, and 3.2% to Asians. And we are looking at those trends very closely now because I would foresee that you are starting to see a little bit of difference in our minority population. Because remember, in the beginning, it was on only healthcare providers and those occupational groups that probably is less diverse as our population in general. This week is, is a big week for us because, as I said, we have a potentially 8,000 doses this week. That's first doses. We also are getting second doses. So in general, I want to share with you, I just looked at this early this morning, we have 16 clinics planned for this week. Five are second dose and 11 are first doses. So just for your overview, the four community clinics, the four primary clinics, which would be Nebraska Med at 144 and Miller, would be the Creighton Rasmussen Center, CHI at Emmanuel, and then we are doing a small, a small clinic for some minority groups, and also the Douglas County Health Department Center. Each of these four large community vaccination sites get 1,400 doses per day, per, per site. Now, what you are seeing with Nebraska Medicine, the Health Department, and Emmanuel, we are using two days. And we are doing it in two days because the seniors take a little bit longer and we don't want them to be rushed. Whereby, at Creighton, they are taking all their doses and doing it in one day. And I tell you also, we have to be prepared that within two weeks, we need to do at the same site, second doses. So where you have a clinic today at, for 700 individuals at the Christ Community Church, in two weeks, that will be 1,400 because we'll have first doses and we'll have second doses. So we need to take all this into, into consideration. Also, this week, which may be of interest for some of you, we have the Methodist Diabetes van going to Notre Dame Housing, Salem Village 1 and 2, and Meredith Manor, which are all low-income senior housing. Instead of having those seniors come to a site, the van is going to go directly to those sites. We are also doing, as the governor has pointed out, we should do 90% of our doses for the senior and potentially 10% of the allotment for now going down critical infrastructure. So we have done law enforcement last week and also yesterday. We are closely done with that and are going now into some of the utilities, power, water, gas, and sanitation. So 800 doses this week will be specifically for those occupation, and those will be closed clinics. People will have to come in with ID, and it really is only for individuals who work in those industries, but also only for those who have direct contact with the public. Not if you are somebody in IT working in the back office or so. That's not the intention of it. Then the other thing I just want to mention is you hear now about a new federal pharmacy program, and we just got the data yesterday afternoon. There are three federal, three pharmacies in our community who are participating in that program. That is one on 156 and Pacific, it's called the Medicine Man, one at 825 North 90th Street, which is called the Vioxx, and the outpatient clinic, the Lawrence and outpatient clinic at Nebraska Medicine on 41st and 11th. Those three, in general, Nebraska has 44 pharmacies that have signed up and are receiving directly federal doses from the federal government, not out of the Nebraska allotment. So for the 44 pharmacies, there are 5,600 doses. So if I calculate it out, each of these pharmacies will get approximately 130 doses a week, which is a small thing, but at least it all helps us to provide with vaccination as quickly as possible. So that's kind of what I wanted to mention to you before. I think the clinics are going really well. We get only positive feedback, which is very surprising. I usually only hear negative things, so that's, that's good to know. And we'll see how the appointments go. If at the end of this week, by Thursday or Friday, we see that there are openings on Saturday, we may open it up to 70 years and, and above. Because really, every appointment that we have needs to be, needs to be used up, and we have lots of people who are waiting to get vaccinated. So, but we make that decision as we look at our appointments and make it potentially by Thursday. That's kind of my report for today.
Thank you, Dr. Poor. Commissioner Mike Boyle.
Doctor, that was an excellent report. I really appreciate it. And I've got questions about the 44 pharmacies that are signed up. Can you, can we help you disseminate information on where those are located? We have a person in our office who has contact with the media. We could certainly send those out for you or if we can help in any way. Are they, are they regular drugstores or are they Walgreens or Walmarts or what are they generally?
Yeah. So they are these three pharmacies, which are not very well-known, which is, as I said, 156 and Pacific called the Medicine Man, then Vioxx on 825 North 90th Street, and Lawrence and outpatient clinic on 41st and 11th. Those are the three pharmacies, and they receive very limited amount, if you think about it, Commissioner, 130 doses a week. And what those pharmacies- a week. And what those pharmacies are doing, they are going to reach out to their patients who already are receiving their drugs from them. And that's the system they are using at this time.
Okay, I was asking, you mentioned 44 pharmacies that signed up for 5,600 doses. Is that something different than the three you just mentioned?
Correct. That is 44 pharm, that it's the same program, but that is 44 pharmacies across Nebraska.
Oh, okay, not, not just in Douglas County?
No.
Okay, are those, so the three that you mentioned are the ones in Douglas County?
That's correct.
Is Walmart, or Walgreens, or CVS going to be getting any of these doses in the future? Or what's the plan on that?
So the plan is, and my hope is, and Walmart has really, has already, out in rural Nebraska, you see a lot of pharmacies from Walmart. And my hope has been that also Walmart, especially in our minority areas, would use their pharmacies for this, this program. So what I heard is that there is going to be a phase two, and more and more pharmacies are going to come on to that, on to this program. So we'll see what is coming on. And my hope is that there are going to be more in our community.
Okay, then I, I bring back something that kind of haunts us all, and that is I keep getting calls about, can there be something in South Omaha? I received a call from Randy over at Metro Community College about the possibility of One World and some others that are doing vaccine, possibly doing vaccines in South Omaha, and also possibly even Fort Omaha. But is there any possibility of something being placed in, you know, east of 42nd Street, or something that would be in southeast, or in northeast Omaha?
Correct. So we are looking with Jerry Leahy, and we have just potentially close to a contract in, in South Omaha for a permanent site.
Okay.
And we are looking in North Omaha, too. We have been at the metro campus up there.
Right.
And we are looking at that.
Okay, that's just great. And finally, I want to echo, I was over at Creighton on Saturday. I, I signed up real late on Friday, on Thursday night, I think, and I got on on Saturday, went over there, and it was perfect. I was very impressed with how smoothly it went. So I really thank you, and thank the volunteers and the people working at Creighton. It was great. Had a shuttle service and everything. So it really worked real great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you, doctor, for that report. I mean, I, I've been tracking this vaccine supply, as you know, for the last few weeks since we've got our initial 6,600 doses. And I think the last week you reported we had 7,250 doses, and now we are up to 9,000 doses. And that's progress. I, I hope that we can anticipate that that number is just going to go up and up exponentially from here on out. Do you have any projection where that number would be, say, next week?
You know, I always am the optimist, but I do think actually next week, we may see a decrease. So the last two weeks, we saw an increase because of return from the pharmacy program. And I wouldn't be surprised if we are dropping down to that 6,600 again, because that's kind of the base that we are promised without extra doses from the pharmacy program. So I have my hope out, but I, I don't know what's going to happen.
Thank you. You probably saw the report this morning that indicated that Nebraska had received 346,000, I think, 775 doses. And if I heard you correctly, Douglas County has received 57,659?
That is the doses that we have administered, not the doses we have received. Because like I say, there is a little bit of lag with us entering all the data.
I appreciate that. Do you have a number for the doses that we have received?
Not on top of my head, but I would say, I think we have 3,000 sheets that we still need to enter. So if you add that on to the top that we, that I just said, 57,000. So potentially, we have administered 60,000 doses.
Okay, I'm just looking at, you know, the state number of 346,775, and Douglas County is, you know, 520,000 of the 1.9 million people. I'm not sure that that math works out, that we're getting the, the exact share that we would get if you just did a per capita breakout. Do you, can you clarify that for me?
I always look very carefully that we are getting the, the share that we need. And so as of today, they are promising me that we are getting 29% of the, the share that the state has.
Okay. And you probably heard earlier during the corrections report from Mr. Myers, relative to the backlog that we're suffering in the criminal justice system, and we've discussed this before, about the inability, you know, to process criminal cases, which results in a higher population in our correctional center. Is there any initiative going forward that would help us, like you indicated with the sanitation and utilities workers, with our criminal justice system, which seems to be, you know, kind of stymied in terms of setting jury panels and just processing cases so that people can have their day in court? Is there any discussion ongoing relative to that? Because the Justice Center seems to be, you know, kind of not addressed in any of these populations that we're looking at.
So I have talked to district churches, county churches, and, and also to Don Klein. So we have a process in place where we are trying to address the judicial system at this time. Yes.
Got one minute.
Okay. So they are indicating that they will be in trial in March. Is there a timeline that would get the criminal justice system? I mean, we're not talking thousands of people, we're talking hundreds of people vaccinations in order to allow trials and jury panels to sit in March?
Like I said, Commissioner, we are in discussion with them. They are prioritizing who is important for them to be vaccinated. And so we are working with them. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Seeing, any questions from the public? All right, Dr. Poor, thank you. See you in two weeks. Item C is a report from Loco Nebraska on the Holiday Meals Program, which was funded by the County Board's General Fund, and not the CARES Act money. The money originated from CARES, but it was funded out of the General Fund. Please come down, present us.
Good morning, everyone. Brian O'Malley, Loco, Omaha.
Morning.
Thank you all very much for the work that you do here. Welcome to the folks that weren't here last time I was here. I don't get here very often, so it's exciting to see new faces.
So Brian, let me note, I'm gonna ask them to put 15 on the clock, so you get that.
Perfect. We do have a presentation, Commissioner Rogers. I, I think it's, I'm happy to do it, however you'd like. Do you want me to go through that presentation, or you want me to?
Sure, whatever you want.
Can we bring that up? No, it was in the, there's a link in the minutes. Chris in the back, if you would mind not showing me while I log in, to pull this presentation up.
Okay, I'm gonna buy a little time while we're going. You all go. I'm gonna just move to item A in the committee and discussions. Commissioners Morgan and Friend, I'm assuming there's nothing for this one? Okay, okay. And while they're going, just note, I won't bring it up now, because we're gonna need a little more time, probably. But under legislative issues, I'm going to add LB 312, for us to approve LB 312, I mean LB 310, sorry. LB 310, we just got notification from our lobbyist that that hearing has been set for February 18th, and it won't happen before we meet. So that's the inheritance tax bill, and we need to take a position on that.
Okay. All right, Chris, you are good now. Thank you.
We're back. We ready?
There, yep.
All right. We're back on item C, under presentations.
Well, thanks again, and good morning. Appreciate your patience as we move through the technology. Once again, I'm Brian O'Malley. I'm on the co-op board for Loco Omaha, which is a new delivery co-op. We worked with the Douglas County Board back in December to the Douglas County Commissioner, sorry, to secure some funds for a hunger relief initiative, where we had the opportunity to feed 7,000 families over 30,000 meals that were produced by local restaurants. Here is a little about the Omaha Loco program. This is a new local delivery co-op where restaurants are given the opportunity to, to join, and therefore increase their equity in delivery services, which is not the normal setup for third-party deliveries. And it is something very exciting that is now new to the Omaha market, and helped come to fruition because of the support that the Douglas County Commissioners gave the food delivery program, or Holiday Meals program in December. The restaurants we had participating in that program are here on the screen. We had 40 restaurants sign up and participate. A wide gamut of local independent restaurants that ran from, oh yeah, great, thanks, that ran from, you know, counter service, fast food type operations, to full-service sit-down dining rooms. This is a short video that I'll show you from our friend at Hook and Line.
Like a triple win, because restaurants need the support. This new local delivery service, you know, it's a great thing. So I'm, I'm happy that they got the money to do it. And we're, we're getting these meals to people that need them in a time of, you know, a time of crisis for everybody.
So that's from our friends at, at Hook and Line.
It's like a triple win.
So the meal voucher, the meal voucher plan that we supported with $500,000 from this body, as I said, delivered 7,000, provided 7,000 meals to family. Each meal was for four to six people. So that's what gets us to that 40,000, 30,000 meal number, sorry. And it was a smashing success. So these other two videos are from local restaurants, but also from the, our partners that work in the food delivery space, right, that we worked with nonprofits from throughout the city to help deliver these vouchers, and then ultimately, these meals. That way, we were able to get all of this food distributed. And like I said, thousands of people fed, people fed. The biggest piece of this, from our perspective, or one of the great successes we saw, was our ability to pivot from an early setback, which was that our original intent was to give vouchers directly to people in need through these meal assistance programs. And they were not getting redeemed at a rate that was going to be effective. And so we pivoted to using bulk meals, where we gave out the meals directly. So instead of each participant in a food assistance program getting a voucher that they redeemed with the local restaurant, Omaha Loco essentially redeemed those vouchers with the restaurants, and then took the meals from the restaurants, and, and helped those get to the food assistance program so that the food could get out into people's hands. We just hadn't anticipated how difficult it would be to, to get people to understand how to redeem the voucher. So we had a bunch of systems in place to try to support that, but it was just moving too slow. So we made that pivot in order to make sure that we got the food out as quickly as possible. That's another great place for, you know, us to see that we were able to pivot and, and still accomplish the mission effectively. So.
Dad, everybody's struggling. Dropping food off to a mom with three kids under the age of five, and she's almost in tears. Thank you for bringing the food. Or like, it's not even like, thank you for saying that, but it's not me, but I'm just part of the program. But like, people in need are getting food, and right now, it's really important.
So that's one of our drivers, Micah, who was able to share this story with us about what's felt valuable to him. And the, the drivers and the other participants from Loco, from Loco Omaha, they've really seen the impact of this work in a meaningful way. So they're certainly one of the groups of people that deserve our thanks, because they, they did the real hard work, some of the real hard work of, of getting this accomplished. So. The food assistance partners, that is another group that deserves our appreciation in this. These are folks that have been in this struggle for a long time, right? Loco is new to this game. And the Omaha restaurant community is relatively new to this hunger relief initiative. But the food assistance partners have been doing this a long time. For most of them, it's central to their mission. And so we had this opportunity to, to really support and extend their impact through this program to the tune of 40,000 meals, in a way that really changed the game for them. Let's hear from a couple of them.
Usually, we give out, you know, the staples, kind of canned goods and dry goods. And we have a lot of produce that goes out, meat, dairy, but we don't often get fully-prepared meals. And so what Loco's been offering has been excellent supplement to what we're doing.
So that was from Karen Paul at St. Vincent de Paul. Again, she talked about how this extended not just the quantity of food they had, but the, the quality of things, right? That they're normally giving out dry goods, canned foods, things you gotta go home and prepare. And this is hot food showing up from incredible restaurants that changed the game dramatically for the, the people receiving it. So.
We have people that come pick up, they take to grandparents with grandchildren, take to the elderly, take to the hospice patients, school teachers that pick up for their fam, for their kids that they don't need it. We have the daycares come and get food, and they give them to the mothers as they pick up their kids. Work of mothers that are in between welfare and work. So it really helps them.
Seniors.
Seniors. So probably, we probably serve a week, 500 to 600 people or.
So 500 to 600 people per week there from Ellen Sexton. So this list is an amazing group of individuals. Heart Ministries said that they normally serve about 60,000 people in a week, in a, in a normal time. And this is not a normal time. And so any assistance they've been able to get through a situation like this has been beneficial.
Usually, we give out, you know, the staples.
We have people that come pick up, they take to grandparents with grandchildren, take to the elderly, take to the hospice patients.
Thanks for your patience on that. These are some of our other food delivery folks. So Joni Nunes, too, from First Presbyterian, their hand-up pantry. Some awesome testimonials from them about the impact of the program as well, and that they're so thankful for the support that they got from you. Sometimes that gets masked as thanks that they're giving to Loco Omaha, but we recognize that we were shepherds in this, of the support that came from the county and the work that the restaurants did in order to produce the food in the first place. So a few more snapshots of delivery, and some more testimonials from folks. I mean, for some people, it's the first time they got a hot meal prepared by somebody else in months. It's a spectacular and heartening scene when you see these folks that are getting support for the first time, but also when you see the value that the restaurant cook has, knowing that they're making something that's going to feed somebody that's, that's really in need. It's, it's really a very cool thing to see. So Douglas County is, has now joined a, a growing network around the country of chefs and restaurateurs that are pivoting to see that they have some impact to make in community. This is a picture of the World Central Kitchen, that's run by Chef Jose Andres in New York, or in Washington, DC. But he runs Food or in Washington DC, but he runs food relief programs all over the world, but their impact is pretty limited in the United States to densely populated metropolitan areas, really in the East Coast, mostly a little bit on the West Coast, and this is the first project of this type that's really happened in the Midwest, so it's really exciting to see and to know that we're making these progressive moves forward. So, this meal program, we do expect everything to be settled on our last 7,000 vouchers within this week. The meals have provided more dignity to those people receiving it than just receiving pantry and canned goods, and like I said, also given dignity to the restaurants and the catering workers as well. It's a beautiful way to provide support in a time like this, that it is, it's not a handout, it's giving somebody money for the work that they're doing, and that makes restaurant workers much happier because they get paid to do what they love to do. Other piece that has been beneficial here is the ability to launch Loco Omaha, that now we have a locally-owned delivery co-op that will further serve to buttress our restaurant community, which as all of you know well, is an essential part of our economic and cultural fabric, and having a delivery service that keeps the profits from that service in our city will be incredibly valuable. So, thank you for your time, and you see here that we see that there's more to do and that we have more opportunity here, especially as Loco Omaha gets its legs underneath it. We see that we could be providing about 5,000 meals a week through this platform, that'd be 20,000 people a week that could get fed this way, so that's a cost to the county at 250,000 a week. We think we have the capacity, in fact, we know we have the capacity to do it, especially as we bring more and more restaurants into the fold. So, we ran this last program with 40, we expect to be at 100 and approaching 200 on the delivery platform in the next few months, and we could certainly extend the reach of a program like this. In addition, we see that there'd be a really cool opportunity to support vouchers that could go to our first responders and medical professionals, and so instead of doing a bulk meal delivery program through the food assistance programs, we could also, the "we" here includes you folks, could also support a program where we're giving first responders and frontline health workers vouchers to be redeemed at these local restaurants, local independent restaurants as well, and then that would be way more on their time, right, that they wouldn't go through a line and pick up ready-to-eat food, they'd be able to order and have it delivered when it fits into their crazy schedule, I can't imagine the schedule for workers like that these days. So, I appreciate your time, and I'm certainly happy to answer or field any questions that you might have.
Thank you all, I know for the record, I know some of us, a few of us I know got a call from Big Mama's, so they raved about the program, so just note that for the record. Commissioner Boyle, Mike Boyle.
Yes, I, first of all, I'm just knocked out by the, what you've done, and it's really incredible. The, it's so good, it's unreal, I mean, it's the idea that you came up with, and I understand about the, I've had groceries sent to me, I have a daughter in San Francisco who sends me food through one of the grocery stores, and the delivery is pretty high, expenses are, and so I, you know, I noticed how high they were, and in any event, this is just great, it's, to me, what this is, and I don't mean to be patronizing, but, so I'm not, but this is a successful program put together by successful people. You've run restaurants, you know how, that's a tough, tough business, I don't know how you folks do it, but it's amazing what you've done, absolutely a miracle, and so I hope that, you know, you continue to do this, and let me ask a question, can somebody like me use Loco to send food to me from one of these restaurants, is that ever gonna happen, do you think, or is it happening now?
It is happening now, great question, so that really started yesterday, so the regular version of the delivery platform went live yesterday.
Oh, good deal.
Where you're able to, you know, download the app and then order food from any of these restaurants, which should serve to support these restaurants as well.
That's wonderful, I did also receive an email from someone, it was a little bit, sound a little negative, they were looking for how they could, a restaurant could sign up, and so I referred them there, but I just want to cut my remarks short, but tell you, it is, this is an absolute success, this is some of the best money we've spent, we have a lot of good providers out there, but this is one that really stands out. Thanks a lot, and congratulations.
Absolutely, I appreciate that.
You've got my vote, I'll be ordering some food, you know, you can tell.
That's a great way to vote, with your dollars, I appreciate it.
Commissioner Maureen Boyle.
I also agree, this is a very, very worthy cause, and like that one commenter said, it's a win-win-win for everybody. I guess the, I would like a little bit more information about how and if other restaurants locally can sign up for this, because I'm sure that those that are not involved in it would like to be, and if there are restrictions for them, so does it have to be a restaurant of a certain size, does it have to be just local Douglas County, or if they have brand other locations elsewhere? So, can you talk just shortly about who qualifies to be a member of the local co-op?
Excellent question, so the membership in the co-op is not limited to Douglas County. We did limit participation to Douglas County restaurants for the holiday meal delivery program, but as we move forward, so this is kind of two channels here, the delivery platform, our intended rollout is to kind of move from east Omaha to the rest of the metropolitan area, just as a growth strategy, so we can concentrate our resources, but the intent would be that, you know, anybody that's kind of within reach could both join and utilize the service, and so how big that gets, I think will be limited by our own abilities to grow. The other side of that question is if we're gonna do another round of meal programming that is separate from the delivery service as it is itself, that round, we would intend to limit that to people that are on the platform, right, that have become users of Loco Omaha only for logistical sensibility, right, not necessarily so they turn into a long-term delivery partner or member of the co-op, but because in order to kind of keep everything moving in the right direction, having them be a part of the service, therefore part of the meal program, would make sense, but we don't have any other limiting factors other than that they're a local independent restaurant, that's it.
Great, and then as local independent, and then as a consumer, we, if I wanted to use it, like, do we just, we just download the app and look for the restaurant, or hoping utilizes it?
Easy peasy, like, I am not a tech guy, as I've evidenced here in front of you today, and downloading the app is as easy as downloading any other app, so if you go to omahaloco-delivery, that's our website, and that'll give you a spot to download the app and go from there.
Then there are efforts, are there efforts to get the word out about this, because I think if people, again, I've seen some advertising about it on those news stories, but at the same time, if you, if, I think if citizens know that this is available, I think that people will really use it, knowing especially those dollars are staying local, and that, and you have to make sure that you're positioned as a quote competitor, alternative, I should say, to Grubhub and all that.
We obviously have a marketing plan put together that we're starting to work, but, you know, everything costs money, so it's just a matter of letting that stuff start to build on top of itself, but we're going, we are very fortunate already that the restaurants that are signed up and participating in the co-op bring some of their own weight in that regard, right?
Yes.
That when a restaurant that you really want to order from joins the co-op, that will also start to create kind of a flywheel effect for the service as well, but we're doing our best to march out the information about this and get it out to the potential users, so.
Fantastic, great, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. O'Malley, this is a great program, and I really want to give you two thumbs up for your work on this. I think when John Heesum brought this up originally, it was a great idea, and it seems to have turned out even better than expected, so kudos to you and all the, all the folks who have worked hard on this. You know, feeding the hungry is one of the ethics that I think you and I were inculcated with, I think we went to the same school, and it's, it's important that we bring those principles to bear during this pandemic, and you have done this better than almost anybody, so kudos to you and all the folks on this great, great program, thank you. I think the original outlay of resources was 500,000 in December, and I was just wondering, have those been exhausted, and would you need more to get us through, you know, this tough winter that we're in right now to meet the need of hungry people in Douglas County?
Great question, so first, on the compliment of the hard work, you're right to recognize that I simply am standing in front of you taking credit for this stuff, but I did not do the lion's share of the thinking, nor the lion's share of the work on this, so I hope that everybody that recognizes that there's a lot of people pulling in the same direction, they were just counting on me to run the PowerPoint, and I fell down on that a little bit, so thank you though for that.
For the record, the clerk bears some responsibility, so.
I appreciate your humility there, that's nice. So, to the second point, yes, we have successfully met our goal of using the money that we received from the board in December, minus a few loose ends, I think that we've probably got about $20,000 total outstanding in vouchers that we've just kind of yet to pin down, but that number is decreasing by the moment, I think that it was 20 grand yesterday in a conversation, and I bet it's half of that today, so we're getting down to the end of that, and like I said, we have the capacity to keep this going, especially since the co-op itself is now standing up and is more functional, I, we're gonna be able to extend our abilities here as we go forward, so that ball then is in your court as a board to say if, whether or not this is something that wants to keep moving forward, so.
Well, appreciate that, and we'll certainly consider that going forward, I think this is one of the best things that we've done in terms of direct assistance to the victims of the pandemic in our community, and I appreciate that it was a broad-based coalition that put this together, and I think that's a great example of our community stepping up to meet the challenges of the COVID pandemic, so thanks to everybody involved with this, and let's see if we can keep it going through this winter, because I think it's gonna be a tough couple of months here, all you have to do is look out the window and see what a challenged, challenging time we're in, so thanks, and keep up the good work, thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it for sure.
My understanding is, Aaron, you've got a comment?
I do, thanks Commissioner Rogers, Dr. Aaron Feigstinger from Together, I just wanna pile on the love train here for Loco and this program, and just emphasize what a gift this was to Together, to every organization that was involved in helping Brian and his team at Loco distribute these vouchers and make sure that the people who need them got food and got something nice in a year that definitely did not have a lot of wins for people who were struggling. As Brian said, the food assistance universe, we're all pulling in the same direction, and we're glad to have his team on board, and this was just a really great program, and I wanna thank Brian and his team, and also thank the Commissioners all for supporting this and doing right by the people of Douglas County, so thank you.
All right, I see anything else, again, appreciate you all's effort, it was very, very innovative, but just let me state for the record, definitely is a worthwhile program, but for the record, we have allocated all the remaining money we had left over, so based on the federal rules, I definitely would support you if the city is free to do that, because they're getting the, with the recalculation of populations, that's where the, that's where the play is now.
Excellent, we'll stay engaged as well, we recognize that, you know, our last slide is not a formal ask of this board, so we know that we've got a work to do to make that ask, so.
Yeah, and I think you, I think I can say safely, you got the support, if anybody over here can vouch for how the program ran, we'd be glad to go over next door and do the vouching for you.
Awesome.
All righty.
Thank you very much.
Come on Louise, if you want to make a comment, come on.
All of you.
Louise Semanas, 3306 Burt Street. Commissioners, I've been interested and concerned about the food desert, USDA food desert that you find in North Omaha for years, and when I heard about this, I saw that the holiday meal program has opportunity to directly deal with that, especially during this pandemic. I joined this team early on, I was listed on the voucher, and something that we found out was that the needy people that go to these partners don't have direct access to technology, or they're not tech savvy, so that was one, the major reason why the vouchers weren't being redeemed at a, at a high rate that was anticipated, so the, all the individual components had to adapt, the organizing of the delivery service moved out of the platform, the restaurants adapted their menus so that they can be delivered to the pantry lines, some of them didn't have to, like Big Mama's was taking bake already, so they were already set up for that, and then the pantry, the pantries were, were the ones that identified needy people, so that was a major component about, to get, to have that impact, working with the pantries, you knew that their clients needed these meals, and they, and these meals, you get them with the staple foods, so like a family or two that are in a vehicle, they can go home and have already a meal prepared and save some energy there, wait until the next day maybe to prepare their food. So, the, as I see it, this is just like a confluence of good ideas, so the money question is, you know, that's what we're, is being discussed. I have some information about your general funding, this money did come from the General Reserve, the 500,000, it did not come from CARES Act money. Today, you have allocated $10 million from your General Reserve for the courthouse complex, 500,000 for Omaha Loco, 2 million for OCF, for, for-profit businesses in the food, beverage, entertainment, hospitality industry, 2 million for Match, which is for like mortgages, 2 million for Dollar Energy, 2 million for Food Assistance, and 6 million for Mental Health Services have been allocated, which is 24 and a half million dollars, and that goes against the 26 million that was put in the General Reserve from the CARES Act money that you used to pay for public safety personnel for March, April, and May. So, from that money.
One minute.
From, from that money, you have a million and a half, the remaining money that was not allotted from the original CARES Act funding, 166 million, that was about $10 million, that is not going, that is not included in these various resolutions, so potentially you have 11 and a half million dollars that have still, that still need to be, I mean, not still, but that can be used as you deem appropriate, since it's coming from the general fund. I encourage you to refinance this meal program because it sends the right message to the community that we're not out of this, or we're still in the pits. It, the other things that you talk about during this time, you know, there's, it gets a bit, there's a lot of discussions, but.
You had a light, you meant Louise, no, I said Tom.
Okay, I understand, I just, I just wanted to say that Dr. Adipour makes the point that there's a lot of information that still need to be discussed about the COVID virus and the vaccination, and this is a simple message with the meal program. And this is a simple message with the meal program, that everybody still needs to do their part.
Thank you. Let me just note for the record, Louise, that the ten million that you're saying is not, out of that ten million, that, my guess, from my understanding, is that money was redistributed back to the Health Department. So the six million that Dr. Poor talked about, that's over in the vaccine that came back, that went back. So that ten is not ten, it's there. And then you have money that is, I think, still holding, that they probably are paying tracers and other things of that sort. The two million that you left in there in the gap was not mentioned particularly, but I think the board hailed, because there's possibly some costs that we're going to have to pay for courthouse refurbishing and courthouse rehabilitation for the new judge. So roughly, you may have, but you don't have the accumulated pot there right now to do that. So yeah, if you want to accumulate it up, we may have a meal or so there. And in real people money, a million is a lot, but around here, it's not a lot to play with, so.
Okay, well, the meal program and the mental services.
That fair assessment? Okay.
The meal program and the six million for mental services, mental health services are projects that are creating new jobs, is my point.
Thanks. Mr. Boyle, you wanted to follow up?
I'd ask, and if, have you talked or thought about making this presentation to the City Council? I certainly would, this is very impressive. They need to know all about this. And I'm going to be talking to some of them later today about some other matters, and I also, the mayor's office, so I'll bring this up.
Appreciate that.
But I think they need to be aware of it. And of course, your mouthpiece, the lobbyist, did a really good job, Mr. Brian Har. You've got a lot of good relations on here. We trust him, he's a good guy. So that was one of the real door openers, too. Lastly, I want to ask you, I want to be sure I get the address correct, OmahaLoco dot delivery?
Yep.
Dot delivery.
Dot delivery.
And that's, that gets you on the web?
That gets you on the website.
Okay, good deal.
Excellent. Any help you'd like to provide getting us to City Council on this, we're, of course, up for that.
Well, I know you've got supporters on there, so.
Cool.
That'd be great. Okay, terrific, just terrific.
Thanks again, Brian.
Absolutely.
Thank you all. Thank you. Thanks, Brian.
With that, we'll go down to committee assignments. We did one already. We'll go down to item G, which is human resources. The weekly personnel report is as submitted. If we go down to legislative items, there's two deals, two items that we need to have a discussion about today. One, LB three-ten, which is the inheritance tax bill introduced by Senator Clemens. That is scheduled for the eighteenth. And we need to take a position on the date for, Joe, if you want to give a, just a quick deal on it, the history of it, I mean, everybody except probably Commissioner Maureen Boyle. I'm assuming Commissioner Friend dealt with it when he was Senator Friend. But if you just want to give a recap, why we are, why our position is, what it is on it in regards to against this bill, just for the public and for them.
That I conveyed to them, see?
Yep.
That, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, Joe Lorenz, County Finance Director. The inheritance tax bill, this is an issue that seems to surface every year or two, but, and it's, you know, an important issue to the county. And what we sent down through our lobbyists, the information is that Douglas County generally collects twelve to thirteen million dollars in inheritance tax revenue per year. And that money goes primarily to fund social services. None of it goes to our general fund, but it does go things to the Health Department, to the Health Center, general assistance, community mental health. So that's really where we put our inheritance tax proceeds, to help fund those operations. And the estimated impact of the legislation that's being proposed in Lincoln would have the impact of having the tax rate and significantly increasing the amount of property tax value, which is exempt. And the impact would be to decrease our inheritance tax revenues by between sixty-six and seventy-five percent of what we receive annually, which translates into an eight to ten million dollar a year reduction, leaving us with only two to four million dollars annually. And then that really gets to the point of either having to cut those social services, or if we want to maintain them at present levels of having to increase the tax levy. So that's really what we outlined with our lobbyists and, you know, our offering to the hearing that they're going to have down on Lincoln.
Want to ask you, because I think it's good to be clear on that, who pays that money? In other words, it's kind of an indirect.
Right.
Person. You might state that for the record.
The people who pay that in Douglas County, I think it's, you know, less than one percent of the population, and it's people who qualify under the inheritance thing. And it's people who have inherited significant amounts of money from relatives, and it's not the spouse. It's like a one percent tax rate to the children, and then higher tax rate for distant relatives and non-related people. And generally, this is coming from very large estates. And the other interesting thing is that a significant proportion of the people who receive the money don't even live in Nebraska, that they are, they live in other states and receive this money.
So I'm going to repeat part of what you said. If a child were to receive that money that lives right here in Nebraska, and they receive one million dollars, they would pay ten thousand dollars total as a tax in that inheritance.
One percent to children, yeah.
And I know you've stated it before, and again, I'm repeating what you just said. The other part of this is, most of the people paying the tax do not even live in Nebraska.
Very significant portion. Yeah, it's hard to get the exact data on that, but just in talking to people, because these tend to be distant relatives or friends, and pretty far-flung, a very significant proportion do not even live in Nebraska.
And Marco, you do a great job, you know, working with the legislators and our lobbyists. I think those are two important facts for that meeting in February eighteenth to bring out. Thank you.
Commissioner Mike Boyle.
PJ has really hit the nail on the head in the things that you said as well. I've testified, I'm going to ask Shaq if he has any, I don't know, you don't do probate, but I don't know if you have any comments you could add after I get through. But I went down and testified against the repeal of the inheritance tax. And I brought down, I didn't do a lot of probate work, but this was one case that I did, and there were forty-seven recipients. And what it was, was a man who had done some work for me on my home, his wife called me and said, could you handle my great aunt's estate? And then I said, yeah, sure, I'll do that, you know. So I got into it and was sending out the notices and doing all the rest of the things. And anyway, the point of it is that I started getting calls, and they, most of them were out of state, California, Arizona, Vermont, places like this. And the family was spread out around the country. This was a school teacher whose husband made some really good investments, and she died leaving about five million or so in this state that she had. And so she gave it, she had no children, she had, you know, I don't even know if she had any nieces or nephews anymore, she was in her high nineties. So anyway, this is a grand niece who's asking me to do this work. Bottom line is, I sent all the notices out to everybody, made sure that I notified everybody of what's going on, and I listed all the taxes of what the percentages are. And the phone calls that I got were really interesting, because they weren't really calling about substantial things. I would go through and answer questions that were pretty mundane and pretty obvious. And then all at once, some guy from California would say, could you, could you tell me one more thing? And I said, sure. Who was this woman? They had no clue. They had no idea. And I'd say, well, what was your mother's maiden name, or your grandmother's maiden name? And I'd try to make the connection. So she was, she was your great-great-grandmother's cousin. I mean, and so he got, you know, seventeen thousand dollars, and he had to pay eighteen percent tax. It's a windfall. I mean, it's, you know, so the point of it all is, is that just as you said, the people close here in town, the direct relatives pay very little, and they're Nebraskans normally, but you don't have to be Nebraskans if you live in another state and you're still the son or daughter, you still do the lower taxes. But people that are way stretched out, that don't have a clue, and I must have had ten or eleven calls like that from people, including a lawyer in Los Angeles called me, who was going to receive money. So the point is, I brought down a whole listing of what had happened, and I took the names out, but I passed it around to the senators, and it was an eye-opener. They didn't, they didn't really realize this. It's kind of like charging visitors sales tax at a restaurant. Maybe we should exempt them when they come in. Maybe we should have people from California not pay sales tax on their meals, if that's what they want to do, you know.
Yeah, it's a very small amount of Nebraska taxpayers who are.
So it really is important that we keep it. It makes a lot of sense. It is a tax that is, one that is very reasonable, and it does a tax windfalls, is what it taxes. It really does. Shaq, do you have any, just, pardon me.
No, you still in your time? You're good.
Shaq?
Just briefly, I'll just say, you know, our civil division, every, pretty much every dollar, Schumacher County Attorney's Office, pretty much every dollar of inheritance tax that's collected gets vetted by our civil division. They do a fabulous job of it. You know, we tried to make some efficiencies, but effectively, you know, we don't have a position on the bill, because it's a county revenue issue. But, you know, we put time and salary into that. And so by changing the rates, we're still going to have to do the same amount of work on these cases, but you're going to be getting less revenue on it. So it's just something to consider when you're looking at the impacts on this. And it is true, it's been a few years since I've been on the inheritance tax beat, but from when I was on it, yeah, a lot of it is going to out-of-staters. I don't have the exact data, but we do see that. And the vast majority, I'd say, of inheritance tax, that we do review, those inheritance tax returns to be submitted to the county court, there's very little inheritance tax being paid, because, you know, for example, right now, if you have a family with four kids, you take the estate, you can deduct a bunch of expenses out of it. It's kind of like, almost like an income tax return, where, you know, funeral expenses and the like expenses, all that gets deducted off the top line. Then you get forty thousand dollars in exemptions per kids, you're looking already there, about a hundred and sixty coming off there. And then it's just one percent off that. And that's mostly what we see. And a lot of times, it's such a limited factor in the county, that what we normally see that's happening is, somebody passes away, and then, could be right away, could be years later, someone's trying to sell that person's house. And during the title search, before closing, they find out, oh, wait, the inheritance tax hasn't been done on. So quickly, we get usually attorney running here saying, closing's tomorrow or day after, can you take a look at this? And a lot of times, it still doesn't equal any amount, because even on a hundred fifty, two hundred thousand dollar house, if there's enough kids there, it doesn't amount to any tax. So just, that's kind of been our experiences with it.
Thank you very much, Shaq.
That's time. Thank you. Not seeing anything, is there a motion by the board to act? The motion by Commissioner Boyle to oppose three-ten, second by Commissioner Morgan. Please, sorry, Commissioner Friend.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. Been here, what, about a month now? And I'm sure I've made, I'll ask Commissioner Mike Boyle later on, I'm sure I've made ten or twelve mistakes already. But one of them that I find interesting, I explained this to Commissioner Rogers about a week ago, and I also got a chance to say this to Mike and Maureen both. We stamped a cup, we stamped, Marco does a great job. I got an opportunity to read those bills a few weeks ago, that we actually put our stamp of approval on, gave the Douglas County Board a seal of approval, if you will. And you guys have to understand where I was trained and where I came from. Commissioner Kavanaugh probably knows this, I used to watch this sausage being made. Seven years I used to watch this stuff actually happen. Commissioner Kavanaugh could also probably attest to this. I would get up on the floor of the legislature, and I'm not bragging, this is actually embarrassing. I'd get up on the floor of the legislature in a hundred and fifty days in two years, and I would debate myself. I didn't know what to do with legislation. I mean, this stuff, this stuff is truly sausage being made. My point to the whole thing is, in the seven years that I was in that body, and most of my former colleagues can attest, I tried not to promote or deny legislation either easily or quickly. And I wouldn't put consent or my attitude to try to block something behind legislation that either had not been thoroughly vetted by a good forty-eight or forty-nine people in that body, or had had a hearing yet, it had a committee hearing. Because I don't, I don't think that analysis happens overnight. I think that the analysis has to happen with the parties that are affected on a consistent basis, or will be affected on a consistent basis. This particular piece of legislation, LB three-ten, I actually read it two nights ago, or a night ago, I guess, I can't remember anymore. I have an understanding now, we had a finance retreat the other day, and I also saw this three times in seven years when I was in legislature. They always try to do this. So I know, I have an understanding of what this will do to a county budget. I sat in hearings, I, we debated it on the floor of the legislature, I know what it'll do to our budget. I also know that I came here, and even when I was in the legislature, I made it a point to try to always keep the taxpayer in mind. I don't care where they're living. I voted against seven appropriations measures. I was only there for seven years. So you're talking about a tax hawk here, I guess. I don't think I made a whole lot of friends. My goal is not to be obstructionist here. All I'm doing is trying to explain a thought process, and I'm not trying to be contrarian either. I'm trying to explain a thought process, and I think I owe it to all, everybody who is listening, and my colleagues here, to understand that being deliberate about bills that are becoming law is extremely important. We only have one body. We don't have a House and a Senate to actually go through these things. If it gets through the legislature, all you got is the governor standing there. So I'm not asking that this body change its process or procedure. Marco does a lot of good work, his team does. What I'm asking is for you guys to simply maybe understand where this old sausage maker is coming from. I don't know how I feel about LB three-ten, and I don't know that I can oppose it. I just ask you to take, I guess, maybe into consideration my thought process and an understanding of that thought process. So that's really about all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyle.
There we go. I have had this conversation with Commissioner Friend, and I understand really where he's coming from. I view it as something that's standing up for the taxpayers of Douglas County and the rest of the state, for that matter. Many of these smaller counties really rely on inheritance tax, when, and they always, opponents of the tax always seem to set this up as, you know, some family trying to inherit a farm that doesn't happen because of this tax. That's just absolutely not true. That's not the facts. And so what this affects, part of, some of the programs we fund with this are the veterans programs, and the people who, you know, children who need food and all those things, and housing and all the rest of it. The county does those sorts of services, and this is one of the sources of our income. And when Governor, when the Governor was campaigning, he came to a county meeting, and he came over and talked to me. I was in the back of the room, because I like to yell things at the Governor when he's way in the front. Anyway, so I was in the back, and he walked by, and I spoke to him, and we talked. And I said, you know what'd really be great, is to hear from a candidate for governor, who would tell us we're going to reopen the relationship between the county and the state, and the local governments in the state, because we turn into adversaries so quickly, and it's ridiculous. We're serving the same people. I said, if you say that, you'll be surprised at the response you get. So he did. He got up, and he said, one of the things he said was that, I will restore the relationship between the county and the state. And the place erupted in a standing ovation, and I'll never forget the look on Governor Rickett's face, he was just knocked out. That's all we want, is to have a seat at the table and present our position. And this is one that is really, if there is a fair tax, this is about as fair as it gets. This goes, as I said before, it's an eighteen percent tax on someone who's a great-great-great-grandnephew of a woman who died, who he never knew, doesn't even know who she is, didn't go to her funeral, didn't shed a tear, he's getting a windfall of part of her money. So I'm not trying to be, you know, mean or brutal about it, but I just don't think that's a tax that hurts anybody. It's totally unexpected. So the revenue that they get is, can be substantial, and it's, the rate is substantial, that's true, but their relationship is substantially not there. They're usually that far out, they don't know even who it is. So anyway, this is a tax that needs to remain in place. It hurts small counties worse, much more than it hurts a county like Douglas. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyle. Seeing nothing else, there's a motion to second. Are you ready, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, to oppose LB ten, three-ten, excuse me.
Please vote.
I vote yes.
I vote yes.
To support opposing it.
Okay, motion passes. Commissioner Friend voting abstaining, and then Commissioner Kavanaugh voting yes virtually. The other four commissioners voting yes in person.
Okay. The other one, I don't know where this is going to go, but I know the discussion on it. LB 189, and basically 189 is up for hearing tomorrow. That just got set. So 189 basically is the situation Commissioner Morgan talked about, I think, last month in regards to some emails we got about taxpayer wanting, taxpayer filing with Turk, the, them having to pay interest, but when they're paid back, they're not paid interest. So basically, LB 189 creates fiscal mandate that counties pay 9% interest on property tax refunds. Now, this will result in a negative fiscal impact on the county. Further, the impact has potential to become significantly compounded if other legislation is concurrently passed, for instance pertaining to the caps and other things of that. So basically, what's the will of the board on that matter? Commissioner Boyle? Mike Boyle, sorry.
I'm curious about that because I'll ask, if I could, Commissioner Morgan, a question. The holdup on this, first of all, the Board of Equalization, Douglas County Board of Equalization has ruled some way. I don't know if we've, it's been adversarial to the taxpayer, if this is the assessor who's adversarial or who it is. And then it goes, I assume, to Turk. Is that right?
Does it ask?
Yes, I'm asking you. Does it go to Turk then?
Is it okay if I respond?
Yes, please.
Okay. What happens is when the taxpayer, they may not come before a Board of Equalization. They'll go meet with the referee. They don't get the result that they'd like.
Right.
They go then to Turk. The problem is, and if Joe decides he wants to correct me, I appreciate that always.
Commissioner Morgan?
But the.
May I step in real quick?
Sure.
Let me, let me correct this. My understanding, I assumed when I got this, that it was of immediate concern. It is not as immediate concern as 310. So if we want to, we can chime in with this on a position at a later date. This is, this is, this is on the margins. We can, if you want to, talk about it later today in the committee meeting that we had, but this is not an urgent matter. Am I, Marcos?
It's fine with me.
Sorry.
Let me just finish. I'll just finish it real quick. That's great news. But the important thing is, there's two things. One is Turk shouldn't take the two or three years to give people an answer. That's a state responsibility, and they ought to look at that and understand that's not a fair thing to the taxpayers whatsoever. The other problem with paying them interest, and I've discussed it with Joe Lorenz, our Finance Director, calculating out those numbers for all of the people that are appealing their taxes at Turk will be quite a process for us. And we don't have the staff to really even do it. We'd be adding people. And what I'd like to see the state look at is trying to limit the amount of increases. It's like this year. I know that some of the commissioners have had calls already of some of the possible increases. That's the challenge that we face.
Commissioner Boyle?
I appreciate that. My point is, I believe that it's Turk that's responsible for this, so that I'd like us to consider, and we'll talk later, a friendly amendment that says that Turk pays his taxes, the state of Nebraska pays it. Then I wouldn't mind if it was 400% then.
Okay. You got anything you want to add, Marcos? We'll talk about it later today.
Marco S. Martin, Douglas County Legislation. So commissioners, really quick, I was just going to say, there's some interplay with these, there are two bills. 189 is the bill that, 189, maybe it's better to hear me like that. 189 is the bill that would cause a property tax refund to carry the 9%, you know, that we would owe, the county would owe 9% interest on. The other bill is 613. That's the bill that would speed up the Turk proceedings, you know, within a, you know, a set window, Turk would have to be, you know, a decision would have to be made. So it's kind of the interplay of those two bills. The effect of that, sure, would definitely compound that 9% interest, you know, for us long term. But 189 is up for hearing tomorrow. It is one of the bills we marked as, you know, of concern. Maybe not our top three highest concern, but you never know, you know, what happens in Lincoln. So.
Commission to speak and say something to you on that 613 bill to speed up the process?
Yes.
Come back at a later time because of what our chairperson just said. But we should be supportive of that in a heartbeat, and even let us know when it's coming up so some of us could go down and testify on it with the legislature. And I know Mike and I would probably ride down together.
Okay.
Commissioner Boyle?
I'll let you know when it's up for hearing. I mean, 613 would set that, again, it would set a, I think, a nine-month window for a Turk decision to be made. I have to recall like on the bill, but I believe it's a nine-month window. And if it's not, if a decision isn't made within nine months, it defaults to the, to the property tax.
And if you're, if it's your wisdom.
The property owners' value.
If it's your wisdom and the chairs, we ought to be supportive of that today because why should it take two or three years? I mean, that's kind of a no-brainer to be supportive of that.
Let me, okay, thanks, Marcos.
Yeah, sure.
With this, I'm gonna just hold because there's going to be discussion. I thought we had a different timeline, but no. Teresa, just shake your head if you can. For the Human Resources meeting scheduled immediately after this, we got four items on specific bills, but item one says legislative session, bill, discussion. That's pretty general. Am I safe to bring these items up under there to discuss? Okay, good. I got the head nod. So we'll do it there in general. Thanks, Mark. Larry, you want to, real quick?
Larry Storff, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, 68132. Real quick on this item. If we don't have the staff to calculate all those numbers, maybe that tells us that our laws and our taxes are entirely too burdensome. So maybe we ought to contract those. I didn't get recognized for the other item, LB 210. I haven't read that yet, but it sounds awful.
310, you mean? You talking about 310? Not 210. I just want to make sure for the record, 310.
Anyway, I will be reading that. But power corrupts, absolutely. Bounty fathers didn't intend for you to be in office for a lifetime and go from here down to Lincoln, and from Lincoln back to here and influence each other. Didn't intend for you to be influenced by people from National Association of Counties, city governments, state governors, whatever. You people have more power than we do. You get to go down there and be recognized by those committees and believed. We don't. Maybe you need to convince them of something, that the power sharing between the bodies actually needs to stop agreeing with each other. Thank you.
Larry, and no offense to Commissioner Friend, they probably could give a darn about what we think. They definitely care more what you think. With that.
Forever, so you should run.
With that, we don't have any other items, but we do have need for an executive session. And the need for executive session is on items particularly regarding litigation, legal advice, and contract negotiation.
And personnel.
And personnel. Okay, let's make the motion a second. I'll let you do it in the interim between.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
There's a, there's a motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Morgan to go into executive session for litigation, legal advice, personnel, and contract negotiations. Commissioner Boyle?
Yes. What I want to mention is that when I saw that the election commissioner has told the city council and the county board to go fly a kite on sending notices to voters, really disappointed is an understatement. I have been a complete supporter of the election commissioner, and I think he's done a terrific job. This one, I think he's made a mistake. We still have a pandemic in operation, and we need to get those voter ID cards out to people to tell them, not ID cards, but tell them how they can get a ballot. And I did ask our legal counsel whether or not he is administrative or executive. I don't know, I don't think he has the authority to do this. So not that we're his boss, so to speak, but a reasonable request by the two political bodies unanimously asking for voters to be able to vote by mail is not something, I don't believe that he has the authority to turn down. So I'm going to pursue it further. Hopefully, hopefully it's going to be timely. But I think he's overstepped his authority. We'll find out when we talk to the attorney in executive session. Thank you.
Uh, with that, there's motion, a second. Please vote. And we will, we're going upstairs. We're going upstairs. It's officially, from my watch, 11:20. If we can, drop off and be upstairs at 11:25. I'll give you a chance to take care of needs and other things.
Commissioner Kavanaugh, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner, Commissioner Kavanaugh, you voting yes for executive session?
I vote yes.
Okay. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Kavanaugh voting virtually, all the commissioners in person.